Meeting the room. All right, I know we're a few minutes late here, but I want to welcome everybody to a board of selection special meeting. We're Tuesday, December 17th. Please all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your power, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. So just a few quick updates. First of all, I just want to acknowledge, you know, for any residents who are online here that we did receive a huge volume of emails, probably 60 or 70 about the Green Hill sidewalk project. And that is not on tonight's agenda, so we're a special meeting, so any public comments would have to be focused on what the meeting agenda is, but we've received those emails. And that is actually going to be probably on January's agenda. They're still looking at refreshing up the design. We're getting an estimate of what that would be, so that'll be on a different board of selection agenda, not tonight. So we weren't prepared to have this on tonight's meeting agenda. So I just want to flag that I did try to respond to as many people today. I thought, oh, I hope these people all are. The topic is tonight, but I just wanted to flag that. Any people here to talk about that project? So we will not be taking public comment on that project tonight. The other thing I want to update is last week, the Board of Education voted to release to the town the three vacant school buildings, Jeffrey, Ryerson, and Town Campus Learning Center. So that would go to effect January 1st of 2026. And so they would be turned over to the town, then the town formally could then start beginning to go through what the process would be for decisions on that. And we have a facilities committee that's already ramped up to start addressing that, but there'll be a lot of public conversation about what we want to do to those buildings. But so they made that decision quickly because sometimes they can, until they do that, we can't really make any decisions about the future of this building. So as of January 21st, 2026, they will be officially town buildings under the jurisdiction of the Board of Select. And then I guess finally, I just want to wish everybody a happy holiday season. The next couple of weeks, hopefully, everybody will have a good time to have time to see their family and friends, enjoy our town. Hopefully, everybody enjoying the new light up Madison this year. And get a chance to shop local too. So we have a lot of great shops in town, a lot of people to enjoy. Buy, purchase as many gifts as they can to support local businesses. So that is. So I just said, this has been, I think, two years or whatever. We keep talking it was going to come and we actually pulled the trigger and put the town seal up on our blank blue wall. So and I want to note also that James Madison is still here. He's been put back up. But we thought this was a really nice to have this. And so now for the public, everybody knows this is Madison when they look at our board of selected meetings and attend here. So and this is with the new crest that we approved a year and a half ago with the town name. And that's a, yep, so we're official. So I have to give a lot of thanks to our facilities director because we were struggling. We tried to get somebody to paint it. We were like, what do we put up there? And we couldn't get anybody to do it. We tried a high school student. We tried all kinds of different things. And then he said, oh, I know this company that does this really easily. And so they printed out a plastic thing and it was like awesome. So so hopefully, everybody will enjoy that. So that is it for my update. Want to turn it over to liaison reports or suck my comments?
I do. You stole my thunder with the superintendent comment, but that's okay. I can go and be of my.
Because this is affecting my budget. That's why I was like, yes.
Nice, nice, nice transition. So so this is the board bed liaison update. So Peggy mentioned the schools and how that's transitioning, but the superintendent is going to be presenting their budget to the Board of Ed on January 7th. This is a process started back in September. It was a challenging process with three school closures and one opening. So just to bring that to light. And then a reminder from the superintendent that schools are closed from the end of the day on December 20th to Thursday, January 2nd. So that's that one. And then Madison Youth and Family, I'm just going to read this from our director. Madison Youth and Family Services and Madison Alcohol and Drug Education Made Coalition are taking the lead to help the town determine the best way to use our opioid settlement funds. Connecticut towns are receiving opioid settlement funds as a result of legal settlements with major pharmaceutical companies accused of fueling the opioid crisis through deceptive marketing and distribution practices. These funds are being allocated to support local efforts in addiction treatment, prevention, and recovery following a series of lawsuits that held these companies accountable for their role in the widespread opioid epidemic. Madison has received a significant amount of these abating funds that is working to evaluate the local effects of the opioid crisis while developing a plan to allocate the settlement funds in the most effective and appropriate manner. The town is contracted with Culture of Change as a consultant to help gather input with the community and stakeholders in order to create a report with recommendations for the Madison Board of Select. As a part of the community assessment, residents and stakeholders are invited to take a short online survey and those surveys, there's two of them. One is for community members and one is for stakeholders, and that is all described on the town website, on Madison Youth and Family website, and I think in Peggy's weekly update that came. So there are multiple places to take the survey. Please go out and look at it. Yes.
Yeah, I know Scott had presented this whole opioid fund issue when we had our last week, so it's interesting to see how. Any other updates from?
I have senior commission update. So senior commission, they've settled on what their 2025 schedule is going to be for their meetings, which is a little different than what they've done in past years. So they will be meeting March through November, second Tuesday of each month at 6:00 PM. They will not be meeting in January, February, or December unless they need to, and that's just to avoid driving at night because we do have seniors on that commission. So that was a concern there. The bathroom door project that was funded through ARPA funds is complete and people are very happy with that. So that project is basically push button doors. So it's going to allow for better mobility for our folks that utilize the senior center, especially those with maybe balance issues because they won't have those heavy doors to push any longer for the bathrooms. There are a bunch of holiday events going on. Their luncheon is coming up on the 19th. So if anybody would like to schedule for that, make sure you do so. And a few more things, Medicare open enrollment. Heather headed that up and she saw 85 appointments come through this year for consultation. AARP tax prep will be taking place at the senior center and that's going to kick off in February. Folks will have the opportunity to make appointments online through a special AARP website. So that will be forthcoming or by calling the senior center to make those appointments and scheduling will begin on January 20th for those AARP tax prep appointments.
Okay, great. Any other updates?
A brief report from the police commission. We have a new captain in town. Yeah, I saw that.
Very cool.
Lieutenant York has been promoted to captain.
Great, congratulations. I was able to attend that, which was nice to see his family and everything there, but a big step in his career.
Just to echo your comment about the schools and the impact in the budget, because it will be part of the budget that we're working on soon. I would suggest maybe we create a separate timeline for working that out that then can marry into the budget later on in the process so that we have that one figured out.
Yeah, we've had conversations about how assumptions we've made about, you know, the costs and what costs would be incurred and everything.
So my recollection is that the demolition of Ryerson was part of the bonding package. That was part of the.
It was part of if they had the funding available. So that's going to be part of the conversation, you know. We have to see, get a report from the elementary school committee to see if they've got the, it was part of that new elementary school budget. So we have to get an update from them.
Okay.
So but that had been discussed that if there were funds available in that budget, that it would be used to pay down, take down Ryerson. So but that's all, we'll have a lot of opportunity to talk about.
So I think that we probably don't want to get that tangled into the regular budget line.
No.
Agreed, agreed.
Be its own.
Yeah, agree, agree. Okay, well, with that, I guess we could turn it over to citizens' comments. Any hands raised? Because this is a special meeting, if we could be focused on the agenda topic. Any hands raised? Yes, please.
Jerry Manadolder, 17, Bartlett Drive. Yeah, I looked at the agenda and I noticed on item eight and nine, you're going to be talking about award of $75,000 to a consulting company for the bicycle pedestrian master plan. I'm curious if that's doing that now before knowing what you're going to be recommending for Green Hill Road, et cetera, et cetera. It might be putting a cart before the horse. But in addition to that, with the charge to the bike pedestrian committee, or not committee, I guess, or what, your committee?
Committee?
Yeah.
They're supposed to work in coordination and planning and zoning, but what about the other departments within the town that obviously should, are stakeholders and should have an input? For example, Conservation Commission needs to be, Risk Management, Public Works, the Engineering Department. So when you put this out to consulting company and it's just being guided by the pedestrian and cycling committee, that is going to skew what they're going to recommend versus having inputs from all the others departments within the town to which this could be a critical issue.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments. Any other comments in the room? Anybody else want to raise your hand? No? Anybody publicly has their hand raised?
John Rasmus had his hand raised.
Hello?
Hey, John.
Yeah.
Hi, hi, John Rasmus, Ford Governor's Way. I had a comment concerning the academy project and after hearing what was said earlier, I'm not sure if it's appropriate for this meeting or.
I mean, academy is on our agenda, so you're welcome to share your comment.
Okay, I guess what I'll say is it appears to me that we will not have a community center as communicated to the voters at referendum, $15.9 million community center. And I would just suggest that a legal opinion be obtained to determine whether we can deliver this project, a community center, or if we cannot, if there's some way that a reconsideration of the whole project could be made. So I'll just make that comment. Obviously, I think it's been out there in the public. The bids came in and I don't believe we can deliver a community center for $15.9 million.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Any other hands raised? No? Okay, great. We'll move on to the consent agenda, which is quite long, so I will not read it, but it's been posted. And obviously, before we move this, I just want to recognize that there's some important resignations for people who've served the town for a long time, including Gene Fitzgerald, Bill Peggett has served on Salt Meadow Park for a long time, and obviously Ron Goldenstone from the Board of Superior Appeals grateful to their service. But with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
A move.
Second, any further conversations or comments? No? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, item number seven is discuss and take action to approve a return of $328,883 from CIP residual project balances to the master account in the CNRE fund.
A move.
Okay, so this is basically going through, they've been spending a lot of time, and I don't know if Ben is on here. I know that our facilities director is on vacation this week and next, so he's not here to speak to this, but this has been an ongoing practice. They've been culling through and finding things where they got it in either under budget or the project was, you know, not moving forward. So they're just returning the project balances. Any further questions on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number eight is discuss and take actions to approve releasing funds for the planning reserve in an amount not to exceed $75,000 to fund the development of bicycle and pedestrian master plan. Pending Board of Finance. Second, okay, this has been a plan that has been discussed for years. It's a high priority of both of our bike head committee. They work very closely with our Public Works Partner, Town Engineer, and the Town Planner. They're very involved in all this and will be involved in developing this master plan. Green Hill is one component of many times roads in town, and so this is going to look overall, the broad strategy and come up hopefully with a list of targeted improvements, either roadway improvements or public works projects to improve safety for bikes pedestrians in town. So this is just a plan that they've been, we talked about wanting to do a long time. We finally went out to bid. Budget came in kind of high. We kind of scaled the scope back a little bit and got it around this number. And excited to move forward. So I don't know if anybody has any questions. This is just using money that we have in planning reserve. It's kind of a standard.
No questions. I would like to use this though as an opportunity to say that with, we talk a lot about sidewalks. We talk a lot about, not bike heads specifically, but the greenway, the shoreline greenway. What hasn't gotten a lot of serious discussion is a north-south greenway trail, something that connects the shoreline to the northern part of town. This would be a very large undertaking and would require corralling private landowners, state, the state land, the land trust, probably the water company. But when we talk about connecting the town, something that was maybe crossed a few roads, but didn't rely on paved roads to move pedestrians and bikers, I mean, given the distance, I think would be a worthwhile project for the committee to take up and really.
No, it is actually part of this, is trail systems.
I remember them showing a plan going north and south. It wasn't like on Route 79 either.
Yeah, no, and part of this is connecting because we have an extensive amount of trails in town. So all throughout the land trust properties and the Water Authority properties. So this would try to create a vision of that, you know, which you know, so yes, that's part of the discussion.
And I'm thinking about, you know, a cinder style trail, something that would be friendly to all kinds of rioters, you know, like just the rugged, you know, go out and do anything.
Like Bruce. I know a guy.
But, you know, moving people north-south, I think, is just as important as moving people east-west.
Well, and I look at it, I saw a lot of time in the UK, and they have this incredible footpath system all throughout the country, right? So you can walk and follow the little footpath signs aligning like a, you know, a farmland or going through the woods or going through neighborhoods. So you know, that concept, I think, is something a lot of people in town would like to see. But yeah, so that's all. And everybody will have, there'll be public hearings, they're getting input into the plan. There's going to be a lot of involvement from the public as this develops, so.
Almost like our own little rail trail.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, you build a railroad, then like off the front.
A hundred years later. So without any further questions, motion to, or we will remove it, right? So all in favor of approving item number seven, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, great. Excited to move that forward. And then this is the next item is discuss and take actions to releasing funds for the planning. Excuse me. Under my sentence, discuss and take actions to accept a recommendation from the bike head committee and town staff to award a contract to SLR Consulting in an amount not to exceed $75,000 for the development of the bike head master plan and to authorize the per selecting sign all contracts and documents associated with this award. Pending Board of Finance approval, they'll be seeing this in January.
Second.
Okay, any further comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great, okay, so. And then the last item before we get to academies, number 10, discuss and take action to accept a recommendation from the Department of Public Works to award a contract to Stand Tech Consulting in the amount of $114,450 for surveying, designing, permitting, and bidding and analysis for the Scotland Avenue roadway improvements project and authorize the per selecting firm to sign all contracts and documents associated with this award budgeted fiscal year 2023, 2024 capital improvement plan and companies on the South Central Regional Council on Call Engineering Consult.
Second.
Second. Okay, and this is just regarding Scotland Avenue, which we got that big grant for earlier in the year. And this is to get the design moving. I'm excited to see our new town engineer. It's really cloud and row, getting things moving quickly. So I'm excited to see how this shapes. Any questions on that? You got a memo from him on the project and you're all familiar with it. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great, all right. So moving on to item number 11. Update from the ad hoc academy community center building committee on bid proposals and potential next steps. So I want to welcome, we have our advisors on the academy project. We have one of the members of the committee. I'm sure you guys are proud. You had your meeting before ours. And obviously, you know, we received bids last Tuesday, I think it was. And, you know, I know, I think you all were a little disappointed. We were kind of hoping we would kind of be on the other side, on a more favorable side. Unfortunately, we were not. I know the building committee's got a presentation on that, and so I think now you're sharing with us what you presented to the building committee, correct? So Colliers is our project manager, advisor, whatever you call it. Yeah, we have our architect here, owner's rep, I always forget that term. And I know other members of the Colliers staff and the staff here. So do you want, you're going to do a presentation then? Okay, so if you could put that up.
Put it up.
So.
We're walking through a general update as to where we are, where we were, where we are. What has changed and then we can certainly talk about where we're going. We could have a very good meeting prior to this, talk about some next steps. So go to the next slide, please. Yeah, next slide. Oh, there you go. All right, so in terms of where we were, so as it's been reported back in 2022, the town voted for a $15.9 million total project budget for the renovation to the academy into a community center. Embedded in that $15.9 was a construction budget of $12.180 million to cover the construction costs. Through the design, through lots of meetings and processes, multiple estimates, including the most recent one, which was in October of this year, that $12.18 scope was estimated to be $14.63 million or $2.4 million over that budget. A lot of discussion about whether or not to go with bids, not bids, what do we do? The decision was to, let's go to bid, see what the market is actually dictating of the project to be. So construction market is ridiculously volatile. It has been for less than several years. And we just wanted to see what the market told us this project was for. So we went to bid. There was a lot of early bid activity. Couple dozen representatives at the pre-bid meeting, so that was good. Probably a dozen or so general contractors there. So it certainly like there was a lot of activity and interest in this project. And you'll hear in a moment how many bids we received, but the low bid that was received was $17.3 million or $5.1, we have $5.2 million over the referendum construction budget. There were a series of alternates, which we'll talk about in a moment. If you add those alternates to the base bid, it brings up to $19.7 million, $7.5 million over the $12.1 construction budget. So there's a mountain part of us, we understand that. Go to the next slide, please. So I'm not going to test your eyes on this document. I do have our copies that I'll hand out afterwards.
Yeah, the board got a copy.
They did, okay, perfect, okay. So this is the bid summary, which is really just the application of the construction budget. So that's $12.18 million. You can see we received six bids. Unfortunately, what appeared to be the lowest of the bid, closest to our estimate, has withdrawn because they did not include one of the major subcontractors. They realized that probably fairly quickly after they saw the other bids that something was missing. And then they realized that they did not carry a major trade. So they, the next day, we took our bid, which was to five bids. The way this form works is on the left-hand side, you see the bidders, Bismarck, KBD, PAC, that was here, Wilson Construction. The next section, we're really just processing, did they include the right forms? Did they acknowledge the addenda? Did they have a bid bond? And they all obviously, yes, yes, yeah. So that's good. That made it a responsive bid. If any of those were missing, it would not have been a responsive bid. They would have been disqualified for that reason alone. The next section is called allowances, and those are values that we think they're going to have to carry. Those are included in the base bid. If they don't need, we'll be tracking those allowances throughout the course of construction. If they don't use all of those values, the money goes back to the town. So, but we wanted to see those isolated up because the scope of the work may be different than what was in the bid I agreed. And then the next section to the right, the larger grouping, is those alternates that I spoke about earlier, that range between two to four million dollars essentially, round numbers. And it included everything from fitting out these services to playground to other enhancements to the project. Things that the building committee saw during the course of design that they thought the town would want, if we could afford it, we would include it, but we didn't want to include it in the base bid. So that's just sort of summarizing the numbers and all of the values, which again helps us to align bids from apples to apples to extract it. Or just quickly before you want to, for the base bid, would include things like HVAC, septic, things like that. HVAC, all the things that are required, that you have to do if you're going to occupy this building. Yes.
Oh, I just commented that the two comparable bidders packed group their pelter construction. Their numbers are very close to each other, 17 3, 17, 7, change, as well as Asec and Dino and some of the bidder that withdrew his bid. We followed up with them, found out that they left out their HVAC number, which was 3.6 million. That would have made their bid 17.8. So that would have, that would not have made them a little bitter. But what I just wanted to demonstrate is that the low bids, those, including Asec and Dino and some adjusted number, they're all within, you know, 400,000. So we think the bids, the base bid numbers are a good number. We're not happy with the number being over budget, but it's a good solid representation of what the project would cost in today's marketplace. So I think, you know, next steps would be to evaluate those two low bidders. Viability and the building committee, which we should contest to, is going to be working on evaluating the alternates for inclusion in the project. Most of the alternates, if you look across the spectrum of the alternates between the two low bidders, a lot of them, five of the 11 are right on, you know, 12,000 and 10,000. But there are three, three or so that have big variances. So we're going to do some diligence, talk to both bidders, find out what they have in their number and what's not in their number, if the number is valid. Just so that when we, when the building committee considers incorporation of those alternates, the right dollar figure is included in the right scopes.
Can I ask a question on, so when we have here, for example, we have the two town departments in here and, for example, Youth and Family Services. That, when we talk about fit out, is that the room, the area of the building that they were going to pay, does that mean the cost of demo of those walls and then building and building the walls? So, right, so that's HVAC and everything, or is the base building, you're getting HVAC throughout that, the core package, right? But you're not getting the office set out.
Specific HVAC lines, two offices.
Okay, so so it'd just be the rooms would still be set up the way they are. They would have air conditioning. They would have all the finishes and everything that you're doing throughout the building. They're just not going to have the office set out.
Correct.
Okay, and then FFNE is completely separate. Okay, and then FFNE is completely separate, right? That's what, okay. And that's the same with beach rack, which is so small. I'm just trying to understand what this meant in terms of.
Maybe for the public, just.
Oh, sorry, fixtures, furniture. So, um, and that's considered a soft cost, as I learned, right? It's not construction, it's soft costs, I mean, that first after. Yes.
That's right.
Yeah. Um, but, but the uh, the rooms of the, the two uh, classrooms and areas up there. If you didn't do this package for youth and family services, I'm just trying to understand, they'd just be configured as they are now, but they wouldn't be cleaned up? And, and all the uh, new windows and, right, okay, okay.
Finishes in there.
Right. It's not like you're not gonna touch those rooms. They would have new windows, air conditioning, floor, like cleaned up flooring, all that stuff, okay.
It's ready for somebody to go bid.
It's a big blank room versus if you actually build it, divide it into partitions with doors and separate office controls and separate lighting for each office versus, you know, it's taking this room? And delivering it versus if you said, I want to put five offices in this room. It's that cost of dividing this into five offices.
Uh, and then, uh, I'm sorry, did you have?
I was just gonna say, I just noticed that PAC group, they were the only one who can, included the youth and family services off, office outfit in their basement. As opposed to everybody else. I mean, is there a reason that they did that that way?
We're gonna clarify that. Um. We'll ask them why they did it that way.
Okay.
Realistically, uh, we can compare the bidders just by taking Pelletier's bid for that alternate, putting it to their base bid, so we can compare the two base bids.
Yeah, okay.
So that they're apples to apples, so to speak. But it's a pretty small number of Pelletiers. Very, it, it's like a forty thousand dollar difference, which is.
If that's the right number.
If that's right.
Right, right. I just noticed that, you know, PAC group had some much higher numbers in different areas with add alternates than Pelletier did. So I was like, is there a reason that those numbers are so much higher? Is it to offset the inclusion of youth and family services office outfit?
So that's the thing we'll get to the bottom of. I mean, essentially Pelletier's base bid is a little higher. So their alternate scope might be lower because some of their alternate scope is interpreted as base bid scope. So, um, you know, it's not exact science when they create bids and they put alternates and they probably move scope around. So part of the vetting process is just to identify, hey, do you have everything in here? I know you only carried forty thousand. Is the rest of that in your base bid number? Or where is the rest of that scope?
Okay.
Uh, so we're gonna vet that. Um, but another thing that we recommended to the building committee was there are a few alternates that have a big variation. For instance, the playground equipment.
Yeah.
One person has seventy thousand, one has three hundred and sixty. Both of those numbers are grossly incorrect.
Yeah.
So, you know, so our recommendation to the building committee is going to be, don't include that alternate. Well, how about we include an allowance for two hundred thousand dollars for a new place gate in the budget? And either the, we can buy it through the contractor direct, you know, indirectly, or we can buy it directly. You know, I'm sure Austin has resources to get.
I know a couple of schools that are getting shut down at Hattie.
Maybe we could relocate, you never know. So there's a couple of alternates, like gymnasium equipment, there was a big variation.
Yeah.
We could put a small alternate, a small allowance in there, and then we can just buy basketballs.
Right, right. Yeah, um, well, and I, I know some of the other big numbers in here have to do more with this site. And I think it's important to talk about this on the next slide, if you guys have questions about that.
Well, I have actually a question about the prior slide.
Yeah.
Um, you were giving the delta between the budget and the actuals. And you were expressing it in a way that I hadn't seen. If we go back.
Back in the simple way.
Yeah, so, um, let's do low base bid, construction value of seventeen, it's a five point one million dollar difference. Um, I have been thinking about this very simply as fifteen point nine million, and then the delta is anything over fifteen point nine. Is that incorrect? Should we be thinking about this as a five point two million dollar difference?
No, you're right. I mean, we look at project budgets, not just construction budgets, but the purposes of tonight's update. Was to just talk about the big delta between the construction budget and the construction base. Alternatives, when we come back and talk about what? Based upon building committee's recommendation for alternates. Uh, what a new total project budget will be, it'll be against the fifteen point nine million dollars. Because we're gonna probably want to include some additional contingency, uh, to cover the higher construction value now that we have. Uh, proportionally, the value that we have in our budget is, is percent, not comparable for seventeen million, or yeah, seventeen million dollar project.
So, so, so just for anybody who's just reading the headlines. This doesn't represent a five point two million dollar increase over the referendum.
No, no.
Okay.
No. This is just an update as to where we are today.
Okay, just clarifying.
From a construction, from a construction thing.
Yeah, so it's all relative to the twelve, not the fifteen point nine.
Right.
So, it's a whole.
Because we're not in a position right now to do anything with, with a good policy loss, because it's still, it's an optics thing, other decisions.
Yeah, and, 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 and the difference between the twelve and fifteen has a lot of different things, and not just contingency. It has
Yeah, soft costs, things such as furniture.
Exactly, FFNE, you know, all that other stuff. So that's a whole separate conversation before we could ever think of. If we wanted to put more money into this project by getting permission from the public, we would have to go through the whole. You know, review of both this, the uh, soft cost budget and the construction budget.
Um, and then on the grid, the, the next slide. So if we were to look at the PAC group bid, as a low bidder, and say no to all the add alternates. The project comes in at seventeen three. But is the project complete?
That's the contract seventeen. Is the project complete?
Yeah.
What do you mean?
Well, so the, the word alternate feels like add-on, extra, nice to have. Um, is a community center up and functioning at seventeen point three?
Uh, yes. What it doesn't include, um, is, well, it does include youth and family services because they include that undercover, but it wouldn't include the fit out of beach rack. It wouldn't include, it wouldn't include all the other add alternates, but it would be.
But, but those are not crucial to the community center functioning as a.
As a day one, like a day one thing.
Correct. We, but we've made minimal site improvements just to provide access to the building and to clean up the existing parking lot. We have to do the septic system reconstruction, but all of the site, all the proposed site work, um, would not, uh, would not be in the project. Those were the two big alternates. Um, at the end of the day. You know, we're probably gonna recommend to the building committee that the site work alternates be included as a part of the project.
That's column seven in the table.
Six and seven.
Six and seven. Um, and of course, uh, recommendation that you did fit out. These failed services, the building committee will make final, final decisions, report, make their formal recommendation back to you. Um, some of the other stuff can all be done at another time. Kitchen equipment, gym equipment, playground, those are things we could buy individually. Either down the road, or uh, we can include allowances and try and buy them cheaper directly.
Well, and I think that the next slide talks about some of this is, it wasn't the original project scope because we weren't envisioning having to move the septic. And redo the septic in that way. So that opened up like all these other costs, right? So that's why the playground's getting moved and the parking lot's getting redone. So that layered on an additional, you know, eight hundred thousand dollars or whatever costs onto the project that was not anticipated necessarily. So maybe to go to the, we can go back to this, but I just think the next page is important.
Okay.
Because we're gonna like, whoa, what happened, right?
Yeah, so as Peggy was talking about, there are some scopes that, you know, uh, crept into the project after the referendum in February twenty twenty-two. And the first one, so we broke it down into sort of two categories. One required, code of life safety is dictating it, and the other, it's not required, but certainly something that would be beneficial to the uh, the community. Uh, some of the required, so I had the new septic system. And then we also put like a, from a budget impact, a high being a low. Just to say that, you know, this was fairly significant from a pricing perspective. Uh, so the new septic system that was required, that, that's required, that had a relatively high impact, the full HVAC replacement versus just upgrades. Was also another high, full electric system replacement, um, which was required, uh, that was a high. Um, want to talk about this roofing system, kind of insulation time?
Yeah, so when they did the selected demolition, which was a task that we took on with the environmental consultant. To determine where all hazardous materials in the building might be. We discovered that the roof plenum, the existing roof has a big gap. There's actually two roofs on the building. There's like a lower roof and a higher roof. There's a big plenum space there. Well, now we have to, now we have to treat that appropriately for the building code. We have to insulate that and we have to put sprinklers in that space. So that was something unforeseen and we're gonna have to incorporate it, but it's a life safety issue that has to be done. Um, additionally, um, the plaster walls of the building, they all have asbestos containing materials in them. And this is pretty typical of buildings that's vintage, but because the building has taken on so much moisture infiltration in the last two years. Um, and I will point out, the building committee took action early this year, like in the beginning of the year, to board up the building to make sure that it's, you know, not um, taking direct water anymore, but a lot of the plaster walls have started to flake and deteriorate. So we had to carry a significant number to stabilize those walls and rebuild them. Um, because once they become flaky, the asbestos material becomes friable, it's called. Basically, the small particles get in the air and then it becomes the alveolar. So this is a life safety issue that we have to address as a part of the project. Mark mentioned HVAC system, we've talked about this before, but the original study that was prepared by Mark's team and our team anticipated reusing some of the systems in the building. Um, but the, um, when the MEP engineer got into the building, went through the whole building, they discovered that we really can't reuse any of the infrastructure. So the full replacement of the mechanical systems, heating, cooling, and air, you know, air conditioning and de-ventification. Um, combined with replacement of the full electrical system, new electric service, distribution, lighting, et cetera. Those are two massive numbers. The HVAC system was approximately four million dollars. And the electrical was just behind it, at almost three million dollars. So of the total bid, which the low bid was seventeen, seventeen and a half. About seven million of it was just a mechanical electrical. So, um, those were, you know, unforeseen elements that had to be taken care of to stabilize the building. That contributed, you know, it was scope that wasn't anticipated in the original study. And obviously, there's a massive cost associated with that scope.
Do you have any sense of why they weren't anticipated though? I guess I'm, I'm confused in the sense that, is it, is it just time that passed? That, or is it until you get behind the wall, it really does?
Yes and no, but it's when you do a preliminary study and you walk through the building and you look at the boiler. You know, all right, the boiler's eighteen or fifteen years old, we could reuse it. That's just a, an example. But then when you really start picking the project apart, you go in there and you investigate, you're looking at all the distribution piping, right? You're pulling back insulation and looking at all the couplings and the joints. Then you start, then they're exposing the real conditions and they're saying, wow, this is, this really is not good. Um, so, you know, you really have to take a more in-depth assessment, you know? Also, I think, you know, when you're trying to investigate a project, um, you know, you also want to be fiscally responsible, right? And you don't just carte blanche say, oh yeah, we'll just replace everything, it's easy, right? Um, so I think there was real hope we could reuse a number of those systems. And I think it was a fair assessment, but once we started getting into it, the professionals just said, our consultant professionals said.
Do you think that, um, obviously, we're in a very different cost environment now than, I think twenty nineteen was probably the first when the academy, original academy committee met, right? And this, this budget was put together. How much of this is just construction inflation also? I mean, you've added a lot of these things, but is that also? You've added an expensive item, but then on top of that, the cost has gone up for electrical, ten, fifteen, twenty percent, everything some.
That's a huge part of it, Peggy. This, um, you know, the, uh, we just had our consultant committee speaking to our office the other day. And since twenty twenty-one, uh, construction market's gone up thirty percent. I was gonna say twenty-five, just in the northies, thirty percent it's gone up. And, um, you know, um, we track, you know, trades. Commodities, you know, on a regular basis, you know, and it really does, does this, you know, for a while wood was really expensive and that kind of settled down. But now metals and copper are starting to spike significantly in the, in the market. Um, and it's, it's really hard, it's like predicting powerball numbers, right? It's really hard to predict what the market's gonna do, you know?
Well, it happened on the Paulson project. They opted not to replace all the ductwork because it's so expensive.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, the, the raw materials for the ductwork, so they went and did a whole different plan. That was one of the reasons they came up with the plan that they did.
And if you remember, so, so we knew that this thing was trending with the budget, right? I remember being in this room back in April or May. And there were strategies to stay on the twelve point one million dollar budget. It just would have been a very different looking product.
Right.
You wouldn't have had that new entrance, you wouldn't have had.
Yeah.
So, you know, the building committee, you know, wanted to try and maintain, you know, a building, a fifty-year building, seventy-five-year building. You know, that the community can use and just be reactive to the, to the market and, um, see what, what.
Yeah, I think it's important to remember that. We had that conversation in the spring where there was an alternate design that would have been very different. In terms of the entrance into the community center, it would have been different than the design that went to referendum. It still would have had all the functioning of a community center, right? But it would just be a different looking feel to it, you know? And I think the building committee rightly made a recommendation to stick, let's, let's try to go for it, what we really envisioned. And I think our vote supported that, so we understand that. Because we tried, they spent a lot of time trying to value engineer the project down, right? Uh, there's a lot of time talking and how you can try to value engineer it down. But, uh, at the end of the day, you know, we had hoped that we might, as the new school project did, we came in on a more favorable side and we might have some with, get this, you know, completed. But unfortunately, that's not the case, so.
Sometimes you use the word refresh. What will the public see and experience when they walk into this building?
So the, the good thing is that the building will be brand new. Interior, it, it's really almost renovated as new construction. Entrance lobby, the stairs, a brand new elevator. That will take you up all three floors, connection on both sides of the basement. So all the areas of the building will be fully accessible. When, when you walk into the building and you go up half a level to the main level. We're infilling the courtyard and creating a whole new cafe space. It's a pre-function space. That all of the activity spaces are surrounded by, and that'll be a two-story space. Um, all of the classrooms are going to be, um, I, I sensitively use the word historically, but historically restored. Um, we're leaving the tin ceilings, we're refinishing the walls, we're leaving a lot of the existing millwork and trying to recapture. You know, the beauty of that, those elements that were in the building. On the, the entire outside of the building gets re-pointed, it gets new windows, gets all new lighting. Um, and then, of course, we have the new entryway, which is a nice glass entrance. Um, the lower level will have a multi-function room that is with a proposed kitchen space of, for gatherings. Excuse me, the gymnasium is going to be renovated new, the gymatorium. And then both, both, um, performance spaces, the recital hall, which is in the front on the south side of the building. Is going to, um, if the whole project goes forward, get a whole new stage, right? It'll be a recital hall type space, um, hopefully get a lot of acoustic. Hopefully, get a lot of acoustic improvements and equipment to help improve performances in that space. And then there will be upgrades to the auditorium, the gym auditorium. I guess they call it the gymatorium in some schools. So that that stage can be used for community theater, playhouse. And then, I'll be honest, I can't believe giving credit for the landscape part of that, but. The, the proposed site package, the proposed site package is really amazing. It's a real commitment and I hope the project and community can afford it. Because it will truly transform the site. Bring all four of those campus buildings together. They're gonna reconstruct the parking area with drop-off for the building. But all that parking will also serve the adjacent playscape and the adjacent playfields. There'll be new walkways, impervious paver walkways between all the buildings. And then between the current youth and family services building and the new building. Is a new outdoor patio, which is, can be used as an outdoor classroom, gathering space, arts and performance type space. It will be lit with a steamed lighting. It's, the sighting pack, the site package is really gonna bring the whole campus together. And if the funding is available, it would, it's gonna be amazing.
Thank you, Tom. Is that the site upgrades that are listed in the bid alternate?
Yeah, the two bid alternates, correct.
Al, if you get a chance, I mean, because it's, it's hard to visualize everything he's talking about, you know? But if you get a chance, look up Bristol City Hall. So Bristol City Hall is a job that Tom, we wanted to do as well. It took a three-story existing building that was not attractive, well, it was attractive forty years ago when it was built. And, and Tom did a lot of what's happening in the community center to that building, right? You have the new three glass entrance and, you know, I was able, the mayor.
Yeah, yeah.
Talk, talk to her about what that building was like versus today. And it is transformative, right? And it's, again, it's a very similar concept, it's a city hall and a community center. Glass entrance, open, airy area, new finishes, and it's a completely different experience walking in that building. Just go, go look at pictures, you know, and see what this building will look like.
Thank you.
It's nice.
No, I'm just trying to understand all the living parts, that's it, and, but that, that's all in the base bid.
Yeah. The ones on the left are on the base bids, but we need to get some of those scopes on the right, which was. We talked about the enhanced park, parking card state, site planning. That, that Tom was referring to, again, not required, you know, by code, but, you know, visual community.
Right, otherwise, if we didn't do that, we have to do the septic, we have to rip up the parking lot, they would just like patch it.
Yes, or even when, again, what we envisioned in February twenty twenty-two, we didn't know we were gonna need to, we have the septic system.
Right.
Uh, it was really just gonna be, you know, repaved, the existing parking lot, add a little bit of additional parking.
Right.
That was it. You know, the last bullet is the relocation of the playground. I know that's important, every time I'm at that building, you know, when it's not twenty degrees, no kids are there.
Yeah.
So, you know, yes, it said it's not required, it's not desired, it's just not a code requirement. And then, remember the last one, I don't know if Tom can speak to this, the stage upgrades, the light locks and recital stage.
Oh yeah, so there was a number of recommended improvements by our performance auditorium consultant. They recommended that we make some adjustments to this recital hall stage configuration and access to that room. To improve acoustics, improve functionality. Those were things that weren't anticipated in the original scope. They don't have a massive cost impact, but they have a cost impact. But they will have a significant function impact, so functional impact, so.
And, and base bid though, does include the recital hall with the rooms, the inside. That's all gonna get renovated as part of the floor.
That's correct.
Okay, and, and the ADA access for the stage? Again, there was, I know there's a lot of discussion about how to do that for the stage, that's all part of the base.
So there's two approaches to the project. One is to leave the stage as it is and provide a lift. The second, the alternate is to rebuild the stage, make it lower, provide a ramp. So that's where, that's one of the alternatives.
Either way, we have to be ADA compliant, so the less expensive option is a lift. However, from a facility standpoint, lifts break constantly. So lowering the stage and providing ramp, not only aesthetically, functionally is better, but maintenance-wise is better. However, it comes with a.
But one is included in the base cost and one is not?
One is the alternate, rebuilding the stage is the alternate. But it's, it was recommended by the theater consultant. Because that stage is pretty high to begin with and it's a small space, it's really more of a recital. That's why we call it a recital hall. So lowering it, providing, you know, a few stair access and then providing ramp at the back. Will allow the stage to actually be bigger because we don't have a room for the lift and stairs in the front. So it drastically improves what you can do there.
Well, I think that lots to take in, obviously. And I know the building committee is gonna be.
Just, just, the last slide is always the recognition of the team that they, that they put in. They really can work tirelessly, a lot of special meetings, so.
A lot of work is involved with that, and I know they're very involved at a very different level into a lot of what went on to the bid package. And I think one of the things that they have focused on is using the feedback from the community. Because the academy advisory committee, we kind of forget about that, but over a year ago, they did a lot of work getting information about what the public want to see in this community center. So they really felt it was important that as much of that get incorporated into this final design that went up to bid. So we recognized that because that was important work. And that drove a lot of the decision-making process to get us to where we are today. So a lot of thought went into it.
I get to work with a lot of building committees and this committee has had a real difficult challenge. At all three phases of the project, they worked exhaustively to try and reduce the cost of this project. But they were shackled, not shackled, but they, they struggled with the fact that making real cost reductions. Meant breaking the promises that the overall, you know, referendum goal had. So it was a real struggle for the committee to get there.
Yeah, they want to do what's right, balancing everything, the shared responsibility, programmatic desires and wishes. This is a building that's been settling for how many years? With the market that we're in right now, this is the other complexity.
A lot of headwinds, a lot of headwinds.
Yeah, for sure.
Well, I think, I, I mean, we're very appreciative of your report, obviously disappointed. I think we're all a little stunned, I think it's, I, I think what I struggled the most about is how there was an estimate in October. And, and we're still two million off of that, so more off of that. That would be helpful to get some more understanding of what drove that, and I know your committee's gonna be digging into all that. You know, the reason our board, I think, decided to go to the bin, we had this conversation over the summer that, you know. We feel an obligation to let the public make the decisions on this, right? And, but we didn't want to do it with that hard numbers just because of the crazy market that we've been living in, right? And we went through this a little bit with the new school, right? We thought we were gonna need all this money and then we ended up not needing it luckily. So we didn't want to create a lot of public expectations for the second referendum and then still not be able to meet those expectations, right? With bids, so the positive that came out of this, it's a hard number, you know, it is what it is. And, and I know we talked about options in the spring about going back to the public to ask for more permission. You know, to spend more money on the project. We also were fortunate because we've been successful in getting both a state bid grant and a federal grant. Over seven point six million dollars to apply to the project, so. These are all things we gotta think about now. We're, unfortunately, we're a little further in the hole than we thought we were gonna be, right? You know, and that's, we thought we might be not in great shape, or we thought we might luck out and be in okay shape. We're in bad shape right now with the budget, so.
Well, but, but in fairness, I think to the process, I mean, I think I've heard several of us say this at one time or another, but isn't it actually costing less to the public?
The price of the project is going up, the cost of the taxpayers is going down.
Yeah, so I mean, that's something still to think about.
It is, it's a thing, but we also have to look at the total of those bids versus what we would actually go out and ask the public to. You know, ideally, it would be great if we could just spend the grants on the budget overages, right? But we really need to understand what that overage is now, right? Because you're talking about, not in addition to the construction, you're talking about some contingencies and everything else. But then there's some, a little bit of a choice menu here to pull some things out, you know, and, and make it all work. So I find it kind of interesting that it's coming in within the range of where the grants are. So it does give that positive option to the, to, to the town to say. Okay, we'll just take the grant money and apply it to the project budget overage versus applying it to reduce the bonding amount, so. So I think we have some work to do, I know the building committee is gonna be spending time, Al, you mentioned.
The building committee is gonna need twice before our next, our selected meeting on January fourteenth.
So we canceled the holidays for building committee, is that what we did?
So the building committee is gonna come back to us with their recommendation about what should be included, should we decide to go to referendum?
Included in the base or in, be included in the alternates, everything?
Everything. What should be included in this project?
Along with our recording.
Here's what the project is, right?
Contractor.
Fifteen nine to.
And, and then I think we as board need to talk about what the options are now that we know this, right? So we had talked about in the spring of going out to the public and asking them to allow us to use the grant money on the budget shortfall. And, you know, we need to decide if we really want to do that path and what that timeline looks like. I know there's one key date that we have to be mindful of though, we have bids being held until March twentieth, right? So we can't afford a contract without having funding in place, right? So, and we talked about this in the, in the spring, you know, if we were gonna do this and meet any kind of bid deadline. We would probably need to have a vote on this prior to that March twentieth date. That may not be the only option though, and I think we need to spend a little time getting information together. I gotta talk to council and, and figure out how this would work. If we were to go to referendum prior to the expiration of the bids. We would be able to take to the public the package with the design, with the budget, and this is it, right?
But caveat to that, could it be more than one question?
So possibly, but the problem is you can't have one question. If you do two questions, you can't have one fail if the other one doesn't pass, you know?
It's conflict. Because then it becomes a veto.
Yeah, which is unfortunately, I know, which is, which is, because we thought, you know, there's an idea that you can have like two or three questions, you know, adding a million for this. And I'm like, but the problem is, what if, you're gonna get people that will vote no on the top and then vote yes on the non-understanding and stuff. So I don't think we could probably do something like that, but I think we can, you know, think through what, how we can structure this. And this is just preliminary feedback I got from bond counsel. We do need to get moving quickly if we're gonna try to get this done before the March twentieth bid expiration date. Because this sets up a series of meetings and votes and, you know, board of finance raises in on this as well. And then there's a timeline for a referendum, absentee ballots, all this other stuff, it's doable. I would say if we were to like sprint, we could get this done on February twenty-fifth. If we want to do it a little bit more methodically, we could get it done in March, on one of the Tuesdays in March, prior to March twentieth. But we have to talk about that, I know there was a lot of conversation, why aren't we putting this on the main referendum? And we could do that, but we would lose the budget certainty because the bids would expire. So now you're going out again speculatively and having to rebid. Now we can talk and talk about that.
We could ask the bidders to, to extend, and even if they needed to put an escalator in there, you know, of, of some amount.
Have you ever seen them hold bids with, I've never seen them hold bids for a hundred days to go back and ask to hold for another thirty, sixty days.
Especially.
In this market, yeah, we could ask, certainly. If you're sad, if you have a bottom, so you can add an escalation factor to cover that, sure. They would be more receptive to hold their bid if maybe they could pad it with a percentage of.
Well, they'd still have to be a little bitter, so they couldn't pad.
I understand.
Well, you'd have to go back to everything, right? Because you were to ask, you can't pick one, right?
Well, you could extend it to all.
Can't reduce your bid. Most, probably, most bidders that are, that are, know that they're out will not extend their bidding. They probably would not already be answering.
Can you just, some of these projects in the ad alternates look like they're very neatly discreet projects, paving a parking lot. Doing landscaping outside, right? Would, would they ever lend themselves to being teased out of the project and letting the town just attack those as standalone projects? And rather than rely on the, the PAC group? So PAC group would be the general contractor for a paving company to come in.
Yeah.
A paving project of that size is probably something we could manage with our own internal resources as the general contractor.
Depends on the coordination of the scopes.
Well, I mean, we're putting in a seawall where, 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 we, we, we do stuff all over town that are fairly large. I would love to think we could handle a parking lot.
Sure, but there are other scopes, you know, related to the project. There has to be a clear demarcation.
Absolutely, absolutely, it just, it just, it first blush, so could, could that ever be considered? And, and would it be, would there be a cost advantage?
Yeah, no, we're, we're, we are, and then Tom talked about this a little bit, so you look at some of these other alternates that are listed in here. And maybe not the site ones, but gymnasium, sports equipment, right? That doesn't have, not have to be through PAC or anybody else of that matter, like completely isolated. And we could set up an allowance, the playground does not have to be packed, right? You can, anybody can get a playground, right? The kitchen equipment doesn't have to be through PAC, right? You get the infrastructure in place, the plumbing, that's it, you leave it and you leave the just like, I don't see kitchen, you come up with the equipment later. There are others that we probably don't need to do.
But the big guys, the big guys that are.
The site work package is pretty complicated. If it, if you were asking the town to just do the paving and maybe the sidewalks, I, I don't know, I'd have to talk to Peter, maybe he could, he could say he could handle that. You could break the site work out and bid that as a separate project, as a separate town project and pay for it from another pool. One of the reasons we made the site work an alternate was because it really, the site work was really never a part of the original scope. In regards to the school renovation, it was supposed to be just renovation of the school within the album of the school. But the site is so bad.
Well, and the, the changing of the septic.
Yeah.
Disrupted, yeah, so I think that you could argue this is a separate town project. Because it, it's not, was not originally envisioned as part of the school renovation, but.
And so, yeah, so the spirit of the question is, we're gonna have to think creatively about how we do all of this. You know, just accepting that these have to be lumped into the main GC, I'm not sure that's a constraint we want to hold ourselves to.
And just so you know, the site work was a daisy chain. So once we realized, oh, we gotta replace the septic, we gotta find the septic. And then we figured it out, it goes under the, the only place we can put a new one is under the new playscape, so now the playscape's gotta be moved. We gotta tear up the parking lot to get all the drainage there. Then the town was thinking, oh, maybe we should run all the buildings lines to the new septic system.
We did talk about that, yeah.
And then we're building a new parking lot, of course, the town engineer now wants to build this all to, you know, ideal storm drainage standards. So everything just piles on, and once you start rebuilding, now it's a brand new site work package. So that's how the costs grow. So, that's how the costs grow, um, but it's gonna be awesome.
So I know, I know that, um, my, my thought and, and, um, is obviously we need to take, have a special meeting to really come back in a more detailed way and talk about options and platforms and get, and maybe we as a board can submit specific questions that we might have, you know, um, about what's in here. Yeah, I guess, is the building, just trying to understand, because we're operating, we're looking to the building committee to go like the layers below, right? But there's some high-level things, and I think one of the things I wanna understand is what is in that base bid package, the vision, right? And I know you've got a lot of that, the designs, the list of what's in it and what's out. I think that's important, um, so that we understand what you were really getting for this. Um, and then I think we need to have, um, all right, thank you, Tom, thanks for everything. And then I think we need to talk about the options discussion. What are the, you know, if we're going to go down the referendum path, what would that timeline look at? What are the pros and cons of doing it, uh, you know, prior to the big expirations versus just pushing everything out again, which is another delay, another risk of cost escalation, um, so, but we should have those conversations. So, and then, you know, I know a lot of the people in the public are saying, can't you just cancel the project, right? Can you just cancel the project? Um, so I think we should have an honest conversation about why we would, I know, I personally don't feel these work could just go like this, right? This has been twenty years in the making. Um, and so we've got a, a budget problem. So, um, I think it's really the voters that should be making the decision about the budget, you know, and the project. Um, so we have to look at the different ways we can allow for that. Um, so my thought is, we have a, a, a schedule and a special meeting to try to dig deeper into that and really have a thoughtful conversation now that we have all this information, and I.
Is that after we get a recommendation from the building committee or is that before?
I think we should start our own discussion of process, like, they're gonna come to us with what they think the number should be. We, we can do a lot of work before that, and then we'll have our own conversation about after they recommend, what do we feel good about, do we agree with them? Do we, but I think we can get a lot of legwork done about process. Do you guys agree with that? Um, so I did, you know, I'm thinking that would be the good next step for us as a board. Um, and then the Academy Committee has got its kind of timeline, right? And they're gonna be coming, reporting back to us, I think, mid-January with a recommendation.
January thirteenth is our next meeting, um, so.
January.
On the seventh is our next meeting to discuss all of this, craft something by January thirteenth, which is our following meeting after that. We will have a formal recommendation to you before the next one.
Okay, okay, right. And that helps me with timeline playing out too, because we can't, you know, we need to have their recognition before we can dig into the, the, the dollar value piece of this. I think right now, it's more of a process, right? Like, we know we're, we have, we have a, a mountain behind, and we gotta figure out how to get up the mountain. Um, so my thought, I just wanna throw this out there, um, because I know I can get, I'm assuming you wanna get some thoughts like from bond counsel, right? And, and, um, and, and town council about how this would all work. I was gonna throw out possibly doing, um, January second.
I'm not, I'm not back.
You're not back yet? Okay. Or January fourth?
It's a Thursday.
Okay, got it, great, yeah. Okay, so you're looking, we can go, we can offline and then do some dates the next week. So our meeting would be sometime, we could say, so. Okay. Is that, so think about what days work and maybe email, uh, Jeannie and me on what days work January sixth, uh, the week of January sixth. Um, and then we'll try to get something else done. I just wanna get a date on the calendar, because I gotta line up before it really disappears, like, if I gotta do a journey there and, um, figure that out, so. So we good with that? I guess, I know we probably have some public comment and, um, and we'll go on to the next step in the process. It's a never-ending discussion about Academy, so.
Don't live in twenty years.
Twenty years in the making. That's why I kind of thought it was interesting about when Rasmus said, well, we should step back and look at the whole thing again. I'm like, there's been like ten committees, so, but, you know. Um, all right, with that, I guess we can open up to public comment, and, um, I, I know there's some hands raised. I request, uh, that people keep it to the, you know, topic on the agenda, and if brief, if possible. I know everybody's got a lot of plans this week and next week as the holidays, so we love to make this quick. And then there's gonna be lots of opportunity to talk about Academy, there's gonna be public information sessions and lots of meetings and so for, to, to get comment. But with that, I know Felicia, you've had your hand raised.
Um, so just to introduce myself to, to, you all probably know me, but, um, anybody who's listening, so I am a building committee member. Um, but I've also been involved in this project since two thousand nineteen. Um, I also have a master's in historic preservation. I, I, I truly am passionate about this building and the value of its architectural, um, significance in this community. Um, I'll keep it brief, but as somebody who's been in this building at least twice a year, every year from two thousand nineteen, the deterioration I am seeing on the inside every year, as it continues to kind of go through this process of twenty-five years of what I'm doing with this building, it is getting significantly worse than it was in two thousand nineteen. So as you kind of consider how to inform with this project, address the budget issues, I just really want to remind you what's at stake in terms of not the use of the building, but the actual physical building. If for some reason this project does not move forward as, as it is, I really urge you to have an alternative ready at hand, because I don't know that this building can sit another ten years and be salvageable. And it would be a real shame to have this building disappear because of that, as, as if historic preservation is, you know, as, as a taxpayer in this town, there's, there's different ways of looking at it, but I just really wanna remind everyone what is at stake with the timeline, unfortunately. Um, that summer where it did not stop raining was not a good summer for this building. So just wanted to put that in everybody's mind to consider as you're thinking about how to package this and alternatives and, and the fate of this building.
All right, well, thank you, thank you for all you worked here to on the committee. Uh, I know, um, both, Terry, if you wanna speak.
Uh, yeah. In terms of the process.
Let me just do name and address, sorry.
Okay, I said it at the beginning, in the name of some Terry Hamler, seventeen Bartlett Drive. Um, in terms of the process, I encourage you to include as many people, if it comes to a vote in referendum as possible. I know I have a few neighbors who are voters, they're Connecticut taxpayers, Connecticut residents, but they're gone for a few months in, in winter. And they have a right to vote on any project that's gonna cost them more. So, you know, they may benefit from the project, but they should be included. It's unfortunate that this couldn't have come for, up for a vote or referendum in November. It didn't, didn't work out timeline-wise, but please get it to May where people can show up in numbers and you won't have people second guessing, why didn't the town do it in the middle of February, you know, when we had a snowstorm and, and elderly people aren't gonna get out and the senior center isn't even able to get them there. So please consider that. Um, the other thing is, nobody's mentioned operating costs per year. Five, fifty thousand dollars square, or fifty thousand square foot building, the operating cost, annual operating cost per year, never mentioned, never looked at as far as I know, just throw that out there. If it doesn't come to fruition, I encourage anyone and everyone, if you haven't been to the building of the old Witch Hazel Building in Essex, please go through it. It's remarkable what that building has turned into. It's beautiful on the inside, it's historic. They saved so many parts of what that building was and made it far better than you could possibly imagine. It brings in revenue to the town, it has businesses, it has a restaurant, it has, um, fitness, uh, capability, fitness center. It has all of that and more. It looks kind of like Academy from the outside, but when you walk in, I was in awe. I never even knew it existed. So I encourage you to take a look at that as an alternative, should this not go to fruition.
Okay, thank you very much, yeah. Thank you, Sarah. Um, I know there's a hand raised online, you wanna, go ahead, Jen.
Hi, Jim Schwalz, Jonathan's Landing. Uh, just a couple of, uh, things I wanted to clarify on, when you were talking, I think Bruce was talking about the budget, and it would be net seventeen, it would actually be at nineteen without the alternatives. Because it, the seventeen million is just the construction, it doesn't include the architects and F F and E, uh, line items like in their referendum budget. So it wasn't a, you know, your, whatever the difference is, nineteen or twenty million plus the alt- alternates. Uh, also, if the, uh, I don't believe that they have Build Back Better or Build American, uh, pricing on the, the bids, that would add about a five percent, so about another million dollars, if that's part of the, uh, the bond, the federal bond, which most of them are. Um, and then being surprised about the electrical and all the mechanical systems in the two thousand nineteen report, there's a letter from Tom, the architect, stating that all of those need to be replaced. I also believe that in one of the reports, uh, there were concerns about the septic. So I don't think any of this should have been a surprise, like, we paid, I'm sure, millions for these reports, and it seems like we just ignored them and started from scratch. So, you know, that's, you know, my comments there.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Um, any other, uh, comments, uh, online? I don't see any other hands raised. Like I said, there'll be many opportunities to comment on Academy in the next month or two, so. Um, all right, any more comments in the room? No, all right, with that then, I just wanna wish everybody a wonderful, healthy and happy holiday season. Thank you for coming tonight and look forward to continuing the conversation in two thousand twenty-five. So with that, here goes Jackson, meeting adjourned.